I'd like to call to order the regular business meeting of the Board of Education for Monday, April 28th. To order, if I could ask everyone to please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, we are moving into the home stretch for this academic calendar. I can imagine the pace is picking up significantly and the attention spans are beginning to wane just a little bit. Just the sense I got the other day. Actually, the summer is busy for us, so I don't get any ideas. All right, today's agenda, actually roll call first, please.
Steven Arthur?
Here.
And Bassin?
Here.
Alex DeWey-Polly?
Here.
Zach Curry?
Here.
Aaron Unstap?
Here.
Ellen Maurer?
Here.
Go, Asher.
Here. All right, did you guys hear that? That was my conscience in the back roll call. All right, the agenda today, we have some student recognition. Nothing really from the President's report. We will have reports from both schools. Our student representatives are here. Superintendent's report will approve, we'll have the time for public comment. Consent vote agenda, which was reviewed in committee earlier in the month. We'll have updates on program and personnel, facilities and finance. Do you have an update this time, Steven, on property?
No.
Okay.
Make an announcement.
And seat all?
Just a sentence.
Short one, okay. Illinois Association of School Lords, Jim, anything? Tonight, okay. Then we will be convening an executive session and any action today following that?
Ah, yes.
Yeah, okay. So we will have action following the executive session and that should be it. All right. All right, so let's start out with our student recognition.
Tonight, we have two recognitions. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Swick and we have a student that we're going to introduce who is part of the 2013-14 IHSA All-State Academic Team.
Great, if I could have Kathryn Coswara, please come forward.
It's my pleasure to introduce Kathryn to the group here. We had a wonderful banquet, April 21st, where Kathryn was recognized at the IHSA All-State Academic sponsored by Caterpillar. This award is, they picked 26 students, 13 males and 13 females across the entire state of Illinois. And in order to qualify for this award, you have to have a 3.5 GPA average. You have to be, you have to be in at least two IHSA activities and you have to exhibit outstanding citizenship. And so it's a wonderful banquet. Everybody just says you want to capture that room and you could run your own country out with just the, I mean, all of them are GPAs of four point plus, you know, and everything and just really, really outstanding kids across the state of Illinois. But this will be the fifth IHSA All-State Academic Person for Vernon Hills High School in two years in a row. Ally Tran won it last year and Kathryn, we are so pleased and proud of her winning it this year. So Kathryn is on our girls' basketball team, she's on our math team, she's involved in everything here at Vernon Hills. But we just had a wonderful evening with she and her parents right here and I just want to congratulate Kathryn on this wonderful achievement. Thank you, Kathryn.
Kathryn, can we have your parents stand up and let's give you a round of applause?
And in addition, the Vernon Hills High School WISE team sponsored by Sarah Staub also placed first place. Sarah?
Thank you. Good evening. I am one of the sponsors, Sarah Staub, and I teach chemistry here. And Josh Ravenscraft is our physics teacher and he's the head coach. And I just wanted to represent the team, the WISE team, which stands for the Worldwide Youth in Science and Engineering. And we went down to U of I and just placed amazingly, we got first place. But we have a lot of amazing individuals too that just did an amazing job. So I'd like to introduce my team, I've got most of them with me, but I'm going to go down the whole list so you can hear all the names of all of our team members. If the team members could come up and just kind of stand behind me, that would be great. So Karen Liu and Lucy Wu, Conrad Kosic, Eric Zhang, Ari Bard, Ryan Curtis, Alex Orlov, Jared Schles, Justin Yim, Isaiah Lu, Justin Song, Michaela Kuhunranen, Victoria Stegerwald, Colin Meister, and Anatha Arorli. So this is most of our team and I kind of want to give you something about some of these individuals too. So we did place first as a team and without everyone on the team, there's no way we could place first. It is truly a team effort. They can attest to the fact that Mr. Ravenscraft was kind of nervous as they were listing the awards. Michaela and Justin both placed in chemistry. Michaela placed sixth in chemistry and Justin was first, so we're really excited about that. Something that was unexpected because the computer science test is so difficult, so difficult, and we have Ryan here who placed second place. And I think that's amazing, without his score, we may not have won. So he really came through for us on that one. In English, Victoria, she scored fourth place. And then we had math, Justin Yim with first. Physics, specifically, we had Justin Song with second place and Eric Zhang in fifth. And so with all these places as well as all the people who didn't technically place, I guess you'd say, they only listed the top six, but everyone's score did count and without their help, we couldn't have done it. So I'm really thankful that I have all these team members and we thank you that we could be here today.
Thank you. Where do you want us, Mary? Over a little bit this side?
Yeah, why don't you guys slide over a little bit?
Maybe two rows?
Do tall guys want to stand in the back? That would be good. So be sure people can stand in the front. And then let's just stay here for a minute and let your parents get all the pictures taken on the table. One more, one more. That's okay.
One more, over there.
We're not in that A big hurry here, so. Everybody good?
Thank you.
Okay, congratulations. And once again, before we go, we want to say thank you to the parents because we know you've all been integrally involved with your children for many years to get them to this point. So we'd like all the parents to stand up and let's all give them a round of applause. All right, isn't that always fun? It's the season, I guess, too. We'll probably see more next month. All right, nothing specific on the President's report other than, you know, I just highlighted, I did spend Friday morning here at Vernon Hills and I know you guys were up in Libertyville last week as we're trying to select replacements for you guys, which is a very challenging task. And, you know, I just simply want to relay to everybody again, it's an amazing morning, I think, when you get a chance to spend a day here, just, as many times as I've done it, it never ceases to amaze me the kind of students we have. I was especially impressed by their openness. I mean, we asked a couple tough questions, including one that was, you know, to describe a demanding situation that you faced in your life. And what happened and what did you learn from it? And just the way the kids were able to respond to those questions, I thought was really impressive. So it's just a great way to spend a morning and I think all of us can feel really proud. The other thing is, I mean, it never ceases to amaze me when we ask them to describe Vernon Hills, as I'm sure you asked them to describe Libertyville. I mean, they almost all use language like supportive, welcoming, academically strong, and, you know, just a great validation of all the hard work that you guys do. So, you know, again, I say thanks for everything you do to make it like that and thanks to all those parents who actually give us those great kids and it's amazing when the whole community comes together. So I just always find it a great day. You guys want to share anything from?
Well, we just met this morning, we had a wonderful experience and just the quality of those students coming in and preparing us.
Is it just eight people come in? We're just going to throw the apps up on the desk.
I'm always left with the same impression that I had the first time I did it, which is, I'm sure glad I don't have to go through it.
Yeah.
I don't think I could compete. Okay, given that, how are things in school?
So like you said, we were sitting out on some of the interviews, or I was sitting out on some of the interviews at Libertyville this morning and that was a lot of fun. It was really cool to be on the other side and see what that kind of interview process was like and like Mr. Curry said, it was really, there were a lot of great applicants. But in terms of our school, to update on some of the clubs, I always give an update about MATA U N and our MATA U N team a couple weeks ago went to Northwestern for Newman and we had one best delegate, Gordon Schlisch was his name, and he won in the Balance of Power Syria Committee, you see what he was in, which is really interesting. He got a best delegate award, which is the best you can get, which is really awesome. WISE, we saw a presentation for Vernon Hills about WISE. Our WISE team went downstate, we have two individuals, Tim Lee, a senior, and Ankur Restoghi, a junior, and Tim placed second in math in the unlimited division, the highest division, which nets $1,000 scholarship to U of I, which he isn't taking because he's going to Carnegie Mellon. But also for Tim, he's one of my friends and I wanted to tell you guys a little bit, he qualified for a competition called USMO, which a lot of us, like in the AP classes, are talking a lot about. We, there's three, there's a competition called the AMC, American Mathematics Competition, that a lot of kids take, it's open to anyone. We had an eighth grader take it this year. And then a certain score, I think it was a 112 for AMC 12, which is 11th to 12th grade. And then, I don't know what it was for AMC 10, for ninth and 10th grade, qualifies you to the next level, which is the AME. And that's the top, I think, 1% of kids who take the AMC, which is crazy. Tim then on the AME scored a 10 out of 15, which is, I think I took the AME my freshman year against zero. It's impossible, that's really hard. He got a 10 out of 15 and qualified for the USMO. I think he's the first kid from LHS to qualify for it since the early 90s. Our math teachers don't even remember when. And he didn't come because he's humble, but I just wanted to brag about that a little bit because that's ridiculous. And then our math team is going downstate this coming weekend, so we're getting excited about that. We won state last year, hoping to do it again this year. In terms of not about, not about the academic clubs, we had a musical Godspell over the weekend that I went to go see, it was really cool. They did a different take on it, if anyone's seen Godspell, they set it in the classroom and incorporated a lot of social media into it where you could text things in and they displayed it on the screen and they had Twitter, things like that. So they modernized it a lot. It was really cool and I liked it a lot. We have AP week coming up these next two weeks, which is what everything comes down to for a lot of the AP classes. So that's kind of nerve wracking. We had exec board elections for our student council today and they're going on until tomorrow. And so we kind of revamped the exec board, which is like the student council for the entire school, not just for one class. So we had that today. And then in terms of sports, Tara couldn't come today because she's at a lacrosse game against Wheaton Warrenville North and the girls' lacrosse team is off to a kind of tough start, but they're, they're getting there, they're getting into there, getting in the swing of things. And then our baseball team is kind of our pride and joy at LHS. We're off to a 16-2 start, I think. Undefeated in Illinois, we lost two games against two nationally ranked teams in Arizona. And then we have a professional prospect on our baseball team, so that always helps. He's getting scouted there, MLB scouts at the games, which is really cool to see, going to watch your classmates play and there's MLB scouts watching them, which is really cool. So that's what's got it going on at LHS now.
16-2, I would have thought, that would have been the high and low temperatures on average.
Well, and there's something else going on with baseball right now, isn't there? There is an upcoming series with Mundaline, is their big rival and many things, but certainly baseball.
Oh, yeah, because they're always, they're always like a powerhouse, so.
And Mayor, I think the two mayors have executed a wager on the outcome of that series, which would. Yeah, which would result in, yeah, they have to sweep it, which would result in the losing mayor buying dinner for the opposing mayor and the entire village board. So as you know, Mayor Webster is a Libertyville graduate, so he is really walking the talk and putting his money where his mouth is, so.
I'd say it's a safe bet based on how we've been playing this year.
That's good.
We're a good baseball team.
That's good, so Terry, if you're watching, okay, we're thinking about you.
Great, so at Vernon Hills, the buzz around the hallway right now is prom. It's Gatsby themed this year, great Gatsby party at Gatsby's. We had our student council elections a while ago, so we know the results of that. Kristin Kuyelmi, who will be senior next year, is our exec board president for the 2014-15 school year. The senior party fundraising events are going on, we're going to be selling blizzards in the foyer this week, which is really fun. AP, AP week is coming up, so a lot of the AP classes are switching from content to prep for the exam. Junior State of America, JSA, had their spring state convention and that went really well. The juniors took the Prairie State Achievement Exam and I think that went well too, but we're glad it's over, it's two days testing. There's no more late starts, so everyone's a little bummed about that, but it also means that some fun end of the year things are coming up, like ABC Countdown for the seniors. Seniors college decisions are also coming up, May 1st. The spring athletes delivered and spread mulch on Saturday for the annual mulch drive. The screenplay is this week, it's called You Can't Take It With You. And as far as fine arts, cabaret for choir is Disney themed this year, all Disney songs, so that's going to be really fun. And band is preparing for super state on May 10th.
Very good, thank you very much. Okay, and thanks again to both of you guys for all your hard work helping select your replacements. All right, Superintendent's report.
Okay, more good news to share from District 128. The following LHS students were named April Students of the Month. Krista Rose, Alex Yor, Daniel Dayton, Manny Queenan, Maya D'Souza, Jessica Immerman, Carly Palm, DRC Jeffries, Micah Brain, Nate Villiard, Lake Luke O'Brien, Colin Apgar, and Quaid Kale. The following LHS students were named March Students of the Month. Courtney Degertis, Sarah Peery, Laura Brennan, Kirsten Reed, Taylor Ski, Alex Pegura, Tim Miller, Parijat Trapaty, Riley Lees, Joe Gatton, and Ethan Urbanski. District 128 high schools rank among the most challenging high schools in Illinois and the nation. The Washington Post has released its annual list of America's most challenging schools. LHS and VHS rank 550th and 883rd respectively among the 2,025 high schools on the list. Fewer than 10% of high schools in the nation made the list at all. Among Illinois high schools, LHS and VHS rank 15th and 25th. Only 65 of the 682 high schools and 146 non-public high schools in Illinois were named to the Washington Post lists. VHS and LHS also received impressive rankings in the U.S. News and World Report's 2014 Best High Schools list, receiving a gold medal and silver medal respectively. In the national rankings, 500 high schools earned gold medals, 1,519 took home silver, and 2,688 were awarded bronze. The U.S. News rankings include data on more than 19,400 public high schools in 50 states and the District of Columbia. Schools were awarded gold, silver, or bronze medal based on their performance on state assessments and how well they prepare students for college. For 2014, District 128 high schools were ranked as follows. At VHS, their national rank was 457, which earned them a gold medal. Their state rank was 17th and their STEM ranking was 80th. At LHS, their national rank was 609, earning them a silver medal, and their state rank was 25. It is worth noting that by taking the 16 charter schools and 18 magnet schools out of the rankings and comparing VHS and LHS only to Illinois public schools, the schools ranked 12th and 20th among the 674 Illinois public high schools. And we'd like to pause a minute and certainly thank, you know, our outstanding students and certainly the teachers and administrators and support staff in the buildings that work with our students every day and the parents, again, who have worked with our students for many years to get them to this level. Very, very exciting to know that both LHS and VHS are in the top 1% to 2% of all public high schools in the United States. As you heard earlier, the VHS WISE team took first place at the April 9th state competition at the University of Illinois. Out of 18 teams and 292 individual students competing at state, the Cougars prevail. Individual awards went to Michaela Kuhunranen, who finished sixth, Justin Yim, who was first for chemistry, Ryan Curtis, who was second for computer science, Victoria Stegerwald, who was fourth in English, Justin Yim, who was first for math, Eric Zhang was fifth, and Justin Song second for physics. The WISE team is coached by Josh Ravenscraft and Sarah Staub, who you met earlier. Additionally, Justin Yim, Justin Song, and Ryan Curtis won small monetary scholarships from the engineering department if they do choose to attend the U of I Engineering School. Congratulations to all members of the 2013-14 WISE team. Karen Liu, Lucy Wu, Anatha Aruuloli, Conrad Kosich, Eric Zhang, Ari Bard, Ryan Curtis, Alex Orlov, Jared Schles, Justin Yim, Isaiah Lu, Justin Song, Michaela Kuhunranen, Victoria Stegerwald, and Colin Meister. A great group, I'm certainly proud of all of them. VHS Senior Yuri Stepannov took first place in Crime Scene Investigation at last week's Skills USA State Conference in Springfield. He is now qualified for the 50th Annual National Leadership and Skills Conference to be held in June, June 23rd through the 27th in Kansas City. LHS Senior Tim Lee earned two medals at the Illinois Academic Challenge State Finals on April 10th. Tim competed in the unlimited division and earned a sixth place medal in chemistry and a second place medal in math. The second place finish in math also earned him a $1,000 scholarship to University of Illinois School of Engineering. LHS Senior Christian Klepak and VHS Senior Stephen Steinheiser were selected as finalists to participate in this year's Illinois High School Musical Theater Awards Program. This is the first time students from LHS and VHS have been selected for this honor, which is only in its third year. The awards will take, took place on Friday, April 25th at the Broadway Playhouse at Water Tower Place in Chicago. The Lake Region Illinois Principals Association recently honored LHS students Anthony Paglia and Elise Hosek at the IPA Student Recognition Breakfast held right here at Vernon Hills High School. Both students were selected for their outstanding achievements in the school and community. Ron Lake High School hosted 14 high school art programs at this year's North Suburban Conference Art Festival. VHS students named Best of Show winners that evening during the reception were Aubrey Black, Lilia Bierarsky, Amber DeFrank, Anna Friedman, Mason Geick, Ann Po, Rachel Jacobson, Rishi Ling, Katie McLaughlin, and Cassie Sandoval. LHS student artists receiving Best of Show awards were Brooke Levin, Ellen Kinston, Christine Kim, Bailey Schmidt, Kelly Brant, Laura Janasek, Maddie Anderson, Ryland Williams, Ally Amos, and Alex Bassler. LHS Senior Tim Lee is qualified for the United States Mathematical Olympiad with his exceptional score of 10, as earlier noted, on the recent American Invitational Math Exam. In February, 1,000, 191,000 students took part in the American Mathematics Competition. Of these, 4,035 qualified for the American Invitation Mathematics Exam in March and 270 have advanced to the USA MO. The top 48 Illinois high school teams competed on Saturday at the State Science Olympiad Competition at the University of Illinois. And the Libertyville High School team placed eighth overall. Members of the LHS Science Olympiad team include Nick Bone, Hezekiah Chan, Rosanna Chen, Sean Duffy, Maya D'Souza, Zach Afrem, Griffin Farrell, Sarah Green, Megan Harder, Michelle Ye, Heather Lagon, Kelly Lubers, Holly Miller, Erin Neal, Tamvee Patel, Colleen Pauliki, Melanie Chen, Ankur Restoghi, Connor Robinson, Reed Satazan, and Katie Ju. The team is coached by Ursula Ahern and Mary Allen. LHS Student Activities Director Jennifer Ulix was named Student Activities Director of the Year at the recent Illinois Director of Student Activities Awards banquet held at the Rosemont Convention Center. She was nominated for the honor by LHS Principal Marina Scott and VHS Student Activities Director Deborah Beagle. LHS Teachers Becky Kenny and Andrea Lara were named Community Educators of the Year by the Illinois Directors of Student Activities. This award recognizes persons involved in student activity program initiatives in the area of community service, specifically their work with the LHS Student Council Campaign, Be the Giving Type, this year. The 65th Annual Illinois FBLA State Leadership Conference was held March 28th, 29th in Springfield, Illinois. 12 LHS students attended the competition and four students qualified for the National Leadership Conference. Nationals will be held in Nashville, Tennessee, June 29th through July 2nd. Sam Gold and Grant Dean earned first place in E-Business and Elizabeth Wu and Ann Malshaw earned first place in Business Financial Planning. The FBLA team is coached by Loretta O'Dea and Kristen Connolly. The VHS FBL team, FBLA team also participated in the state competition. In addition to bringing home many top 10 honors, 10 members of the team qualified for this year's national competition in Nashville. The team is sponsored by Diane Phillips. Team members qualifying for Nationals are Justin Yim, who finished third place in Business Calculations, Aritha Adarajew, finished first place in Business Math, Vijuv Shastri, finished second place in Client Services, Noah Cho finished first place on the help desk, Julie Bolos finished first place in Introduction to Business, Ryan Curtis was second place in Introduction to Informal Technology Concepts, Narin Akarati and Alex Lau were first place in Public Service Announcements, and Oliver Lee Young, Derek Zhang, and Angit Angroal were first place in Sports and Entertainment Management. VHS 2010 graduate David Valentino was one of 11 winners honored at the United States Institute of Theater Technology Conference in Fort Worth, Texas. David, currently a student at the University of North Carolina School for the Arts, received the USITW Orin Parker Undergraduate Scene Design Award. USIT members from across the country nominated talented young artists who are completing or recently completed their education for the honors. David started his set design career at VHS by designing the 2000 set, 2010 set for The Mousetrap. LHS sophomore Luke Wardenaby was named a finalist in the Illinois Holocaust Museum and Education Center's 2014 Leo and Antonio Gershunoff Memorial Student Essay Contest. Luke was recognized for his submission, The Keys to Our Past, Your Reminders of Our Past, at a reception earlier this month at the Illinois Holocaust Museum. On March 17th, LHS seniors Kelly Brant and Krista Erlendson won national silver medals for their photographs submitted to the 2014 National Scholastic Art and Writing Competition. The Scholastic Art and Writing Awards Competition is the longest running and most prestigious scholarship competition, as well as the largest source of scholarships for creative teenagers in grades seven through 12 in the United States. This year, tens of thousands of pieces from across the country were judged regionally and gold medal winners from the regional level were judged on the national level in 16 different art media categories. The Scholastic National Silver Medal is one of the highest levels of achievement on the national level. Kelly and Krista have both earned monetary scholarships for their submissions and have been invited to receive their medals at an awards ceremony at Carnegie Hall on June 6th, 2014. The LHS Symphonic Band won the Class 4A Competition at the State of Illinois Invitational Band Contest held at Illinois State University last weekend. The band received Division 1 ratings from all adjudicators and placed 10th overall. So once again, as we conclude, four pages of outstanding student information, I think it should be evident to the public again that our students are very successful across a wide variety of activities, athletics, the fine arts, and academics. And we are certainly proud of them and again, the staff and their parents who have worked with them so hard over the years, it's absolutely fabulous. is absolutely fabulous across the board. Okay, next on the Superintendent's Report, as the Board will note in your packet, we had one FOIA request since our last meeting. Number three on the Superintendent's Report is approval of the two thousand and fourteen Ombudsman's Ben Alternative Educational Services Agreement. And as the Board will remember, this time of year, we do use Ombudsman's services for external placement from time to time, and over the course of the years, we have taken a contract that has contracted a similar number of spots that are in the contract, and we recommend this evening that, once again, we engage the services for the specific seats that we have requested at Ombudsman.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the Ombudsman's Alternative Educational Services Agreement as shown in your pack?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Dellyfow?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Bradser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Our motion carries.
Okay, thank you. And next on the Superintendent's Report this evening, it gives me great pleasure tonight to recommend Mark Koopman for the new District 128 Director of Buildings and Grounds. Mark is currently Director of Buildings and Grounds here at Vernon Hills High School. Mark came to us from Highland Park Deerfield High School District 113, where he did outstanding work. He has an excellent background, great organizational skills, wonderful knowledge base, and really superior people skills. And in his time here, he has really impressed Ellen and her team, and Jess, Yasmin, Al, myself, and Chris Dancel, who is the LHS Director of Buildings and Grounds. Mark is very excited about, you know, taking this next step, and this is a precursor, again, to getting our team lined up and put in place as we begin over the next two to five years to engage in our larger capital projects. So, with that, we would wholeheartedly recommend Mark Koopman for the new District Director of Buildings and Grounds position.
Is there a motion to hire Mark Cooper Koopman as District Director of Building and Grounds?
So moved.
Second? Okay, any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Dellyfow?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Bradser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Our motion carries.
Thank you. And one, several pieces of information very quickly under other tonight, as we always like to keep the Board aware of what's going on in Springfield that may impact us locally. As you're aware, the legislature returns tomorrow for their sprint to the end, to the end of May, which includes putting a budget in place for our state in the difficult financial position we're in, and many of the decisions that are going to be tough that go with that. There are three areas that are of concern to us right now that we're working with, not only our local legislators, but legislators at the state level on. First is, we continue to work with them on our concerns regarding a common core assessment, and for Illinois, that would be Park, the timing of that assessment, the technological preparedness across the state for that assessment, and maintaining ACT, in-class, during-school ACT test is part of that process. So, we're continuing to work with our advocates down there and engaging with legislators, including, also including the State Superintendent of Schools. So hopefully, we'll have some better news to report on that in the future. Second, there is a discipline bill floating downstate which has legs, and it is Senate Bill three thousand and four, Amendment Two, and that bill has grave concern for us with our feet on the ground at the local level as we are trying to maintain a safe and secure learning environment for students. In essence, what that bill does is it rolls back twenty-five years of really good legislative work that has given us the tools to make sure that we can provide safe and secure learning environments for our students. It limits the length of suspensions for students for some pretty significant offenses, even though we already have a really strong set of due process, things in place for students when they go through student discipline. So, we're monitoring that bill, and we're working with our local senators here, that would be Senator Link and Senator Duffy on that bill, to make sure they know how we feel about that bill. That is a quantum leap back in the world that we live in today, when there's more and more attention giving to, given to securing school facilities. The last bill is a bill that's coming off of work of the EFAC Committee, which is the Education Funding Advisory Committee, which is a bipartisan group of legislators who have been looking at the way that we fund schools in Illinois. They've made some initial recommendations out of that committee, and of course, from that, there will be winners and losers, so to speak, from that bill. We've had a number of conversations with the Board here about our potential willingness to work with some of our, the limited resources that we get from the state because we're a property-rich district, with other districts that don't have as much as we have. So, the Superintendents at this point met with two state senators two weeks ago from Lake County, who are sponsors of the bill, we had a great conversation with them, and what we've encouraged them to do is wait one more legislative cycle so we have a better picture of what the impact of the budget is going to be in the state, so more districts know locally what impact just the normal budget process is going to have prior to passing that legislation. For example, we know at some point we're going to pick up the cost shift for the pension, which will be six percent when it's fully implemented. So, we need to have a little bit more information, to go back to a point that Alex always makes with us, prior to actually implementing that legislation. So, we'll see what happens with that bill between now and the end of May, but those are bills that we're paying attention to and that we're in constant contact with our legislators on. And that concludes the Superintendent's Report.
Okay, thank you. Anybody from the public would like to speak? All right, seeing none. Next, a consent vote agenda is listed, it was reviewed in committee earlier this month. Can I ask for a motion to approve the consent vote agenda? Oh, sorry. Move to approve the consent vote agenda.
Second?
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Bradser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Dellyfow?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Bradser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Dellyfow?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Next, Program and Personnel Committee, Chipper, Sam Mauer.
Okay, we have two items. The first is educational tour requests. We need a motion to approve the educational tour request as listed. There are six of them.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Bradser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Dellyfow?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Bradser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Dellyfow?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Bradser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Dellyfow?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Bradser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Noah?
Aye.
Bradser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Noah?
Aye.
Bradser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Dellyfow?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Bradser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Noah?
Aye.
Bradser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Dellyfow?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Bradser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Dellyfow?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Bradser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Dellyfow?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Bradser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Dellyfow?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Bradser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Dellyfow?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Bradser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Dellyfow?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Bradser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Noah?
Aye.
Bradser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Dellyfow?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Bradser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Dellyfow?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Bradser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Dellyfow?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Bradser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Dellyfow?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Bradser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Dellyfow?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Bradser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Dellyfow?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Bradser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Noah?
Aye.
Bradser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Noah?
Aye.
Bradser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Dellyfow?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Bradser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Dellyfow?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Bradser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Dellyfow?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?